Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is now four o'clock, June 13th, for a special meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
I'm assuming he'd be here pretty soon. If you'll all just stand, please, and we'll say a Pledge of Allegiance and have a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item 3.1.
Item 3.1, Kansas State University President Richard B. Myers will address the commissioners and the public to announce the global aeronautic initiative being explored by the university and community.
Mr. Myers.
Well, first, let me say...
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, thank you for that, but thank you for the opportunity to talk about something we think has potential to help Polytechnic grow and this community grow. And we'll go through that, kind of explain the vision and the partnership, but we've already formed a partnership because, thanks to the city and the county economic development folks here in Salina, we've already got, we've got some seed money to do some studies to see if we're on to something really big or just big or what we're on to. But we'll go through all that today, and we just appreciate the opportunity to be in front of everybody, and I hope there's some folks here from the public, because you've probably heard a little bit about this, but this is going to put a little bit more meat on those bones so we can understand...
What if we might catch the lights back there at the back, up here, at least? Can we, I think we might see a...
Might see it better?
Yeah, we might see it a little better.
That is better, right? So, we thank you again for the opportunity...
Thank you.
And for being good partners all along, but particularly on this initiative. So, here's what we're going to talk about today, a little bit about the history, which you know better than I do, so I won't belabor that, about the opportunity that we see before us as a community, as a university, of the process we're involved in and sort of where we are, where we are today. Well, there it is. Closed in 1965, the same time I got my commission and left K-State and joined United States Air Force. And, of course, I didn't head out this way because base was closing. Too bad, because it's obviously a great facility. So, the history on aviation in this community is, obviously goes back a long way and is a very rich tradition. And so, resources come with this. We've got this wonderful base of which Polytechnic is part of, we've got the runway, and what a lot of people don't think about, we've got airspace. So, if you wanted to do some of the things we're going to talk about doing, if you wanted to do it in New York City, New Jersey, LA, San Francisco, you couldn't do it because you don't have the airspace. We have airspace here, and we often, you know, we don't, we don't, we just take it for granted, but it's important when we get to this particular project. I think most of you know about our aviation program. Verna, where's our program rank nationally? What do you think?
The aviation professional pilot is up there pretty high. The UAS is not...
I'm going to get the UAS, but professional pilot is...
Up in the top 10.
Okay, so, top 10, top 10 program. We think it can be stronger as well, and we'll talk just a second about that, but we talk, talk about global aviation initiative that encompasses this part of the business as well. And then, here's where we think there's a lot of excitement. It's around unmanned aircraft systems, and we say wave of the future. So, what are the big trends in the future? I would, I would say that the combination of computers getting more powerful and smaller, development of sensors that can do all sorts of interesting things, either on the farm or over the oceans or wherever you need to have them do their things, but these terrific sensors we have today, the ability beyond GPS to know where we are, X, Y, and Z, in less than a centimeter, is becoming pretty standard in some professions. If we put all that, if we put all that together, and robotics, and artificial intelligence, then you get to something that the CEO of Northrop Grumman, I used to be on that board until this last spring, but he gave a Landon lecture, and he talked about cognitive autonomy. And so, this is beyond robots. This is, this is where things are going. If you want to think about cognitive autonomy, think about self-driving cars where the sensors and the brain, the software, has to make decisions, not just when to stop and turn and all that sort of stuff, but if something, somebody runs out in front of them, they have to make a decision, can I stop? If I can't stop, do I go left? Oops, there's cars coming there, do I go right? That's the sidewalk, there are more people there than there are... So, that's cognitive autonomy, being able to perform tasks that a human can perform, but perhaps faster and more efficient, so we can be riding around in our autonomous cars. That's, that's the notion, but the bigger notion is that this is one of the big waves that's, that's taking all of us, and most of our professions have already been, been impacted by it. What we don't want to be in the future, we don't want to pass this opportunity up because we have the Eastman-Kodak mindset that, you know, film's going to be around forever, we're not going to go into digital photography, don't worry about that. And, of course, they went out of business. Or Blockbuster, you know, you used to go there and rent your, your movies, a thing of the past, a good business model for a short period of time. We think this is a business model where we're doing, we have some reasonable competence right now, but that it's a business model that's only going to get bigger in the, in the future. So, one of the magazines ranked us as number two college in the nation for unmanned aerial systems. That was in 20, in 2016, that's what Dean Fitzsimmons was referring to. A big deal. One of the things that impressed me, though, when I went out to Salina and, you know, I became the permanent president in November, maybe you don't know that, that was interim starting last April, so about a year ago. So, on one of my first visits out here, I said, "Well, this is really terrific, but these facilities are, these are old cement block buildings, and they're not very impressive." We're doing impressive work in them, but if you want to grow, if you want to bring, you know, world-class faculty, great students in there, this isn't the place to start, so, with these facilities. So, that got me thinking about how much, how much more can this be? Are we taking full advantage of the lead we have nationally and in some degree internationally, and can we, can we build on that and make it something good, not only for Kansas State, but the community? Because we, this is all about partnerships, and that's what land grants do, we partner and, and help everybody, I think. So, I, I think what people like about what we do is our, our hands-on approach, and we have those, those expertise in flight and operations and design and integration. There are lots of other pieces to the unmanned aerial system pie that are important, but we have our niches. Perhaps the biggest niche is how you operate these systems in... Can I take my jacket off, for whatever reason?
You most certainly can. It's gotten warm in here.
It's gotten warm in here, man, I'm working too hard or something. Oh, you...
I'm working too hard. Kent Blaskok doing this, but I'll do it.
I'll do it. No, Kent, just stay right where you are, Kent, please. Is how you integrate these systems in our national airspace, and we have real expertise in that. People come to us and ask us, "How do we, how do we integrate unmanned aerial systems in with our commercial air traffic and our general aviation air traffic?" So, we have this extraordinary capability today, and we all know about the runway, that's an important part of this. This flight program, by the way, and I don't know how much you know or what Verna's talked about, but we have 12 Saudi students that are still on track to come, 15?
15, or either way, 12.
Okay, so, they've been getting some tutelage over in Manhattan, and they'll come to Salina to Polytechnic and be part of the flight school. They wanted to send, I think, 50, right? So, there's this need for this kind of program, too, and handling 50 people was just not something that Verna thought they could, they could do right away. So, we're going to try, try the 15 and then, and build from there. They're not the only country that needs aviation folks, they're just, they're one of, one of many, and we have lots of specialties in aviation besides, besides pilot. So, one of the things we're thinking about, on top of what I've said, is we want to build on the strengths that we bring to the equation. So, a land-grant institution, one of our, one of the things we do is, of course, research and discovery, so we have robust research capabilities, leads to innovation. We provide talent, access to faculty expertise, undergraduate and graduate talent pipeline, and I would say, you know, as, as we develop this, this whole notion, as we go forward here and you see what we're going to say, we want a lot of that talent to stay right here in, in Salina, if we can, and we think we can build to that. That's, not the university, but globally, other global companies come in and help us do that. And then, we can specialize our education to meet the needs of the industry in the area, the technology that's, the training they need, or executive education. So, we can, we can design programs if we can attract other firms in here to help us with this vision. We're ideally suited to that, and it's right in line with our mission, and that is helping economies continue to grow. I put this chart in just to, just to show you how funding has changed since the last time you ever cared about it. I'm not going to have one. So, this, this purple line is commission and fee. You see it going up, and guess what? Going down at the same time are state appropriations. So, if this goes down, this is how to go, go up to make, make up the difference. And I'll just mention the gold line. One of the things that's been helpful at Kansas State is that our land-crepe has really increased over the last decade. I've been on the, one of the things I did before I joined the K-State permanently, I was on the foundation board and then chairman of the board for a couple of years, that's our fundraising arm. Back when I first joined in 2006, 2007, if we got the $90 million a year in fundraising, we thought, "Oh, boy, we're, we're there." We finally hit $100, $100 million in like '08 or '09. This year, we'll do $150 million. It's about the fifth year in a row that we've been at that level. Next year, the goal's going to be $155 million. They spent off over $70 million of, out of the endowment to operate Kansas State University. And our endowment's still pretty small when you compare it to KU or others, we're, we're behind, but that's, that's kind of the good news on that chart. The, the bad news is as state appropriations go down, then tuition goes up to make up the revenue difference, and that's unfortunate because we want to provide access for all that, that are capable of going to school. So, a list, a list of partners, and we, we thank you for this. The way you make progress, I think, in anything big is that you have lots of partners. No one entity can do it by themselves. So, I've already said thank you, I think, to the city of Salina, to the county, to the airport authority, the Chamber, and the Community Economic Development Organization, because some of you are funding part of this research that's going to flesh this whole concept out, and we've got other at federal and state government levels. There's a lot of enthusiasm at the aviation piece of KDOT that really want to get in, think, think there's room to grow and, and build what we have here in, at Polytechnic. And then, of course, the private sector, and, and that's what I was referring to, the things we can do as K-State to help the private sector, attract private sector partners here. So, here are some of the, the strategies, and probably an incomplete list, but a, a pretty good starting point. So, we think about strategic capacity building. This is, we need to build faculty to the point where we can do the sorts of things we want to do, and so, we need, we need, we need growth there. We need, we need growth when it comes to the kind of students we're attracting as well. Facilities and airspace, I talked a little bit about that. I think some of our facilities are grand at Polytechnic, and some of our facilities aren't up to standard, and we've got to, we've got to do something about those. Aerospace is a real plus, and it, I think it differentiates, differentiates our place here in Salina as, as opposed to, to others. Corporate partnerships. One of the things we'd like to build is increased corporate partnerships with, with us, and I, every time I go down to Wichita, I always look for another corporate partner. They build airplanes, right? So, there was a, a comment made by, by one of their CEOs down there of the, Textron Aviation said, you know, FedEx wants to build some autonomous, they're Susta 206, the big mail wagon they use to haul, FedEx uses to haul some of the mail around locally, regionally, and it turns out that FedEx backed out of that idea, but when they mentioned it, I said, "We know where you can bring your airplane and test them, we can, we can do all that right here in Salina. We know, we know how to integrate you in the airspace, we can help you with all the operations and maintenance of an autonomous system, that's, that's us." And the thought, the thought of having that kind of thing going on out of Polytechnic kind of got the juices flowing, then FedEx said, "No, we're going to stick with manned aircraft." My guess is that's only, that's temporary, because the wave, big technological wave I talked about, is going to overtake all that, I believe, at some point. The brand is important. Our brand here at Polytechnic, the community brand, is really important to our concept. And so, we have a bit of a, and you all have a bit of a national reputation because of our flight school, because of unmanned here, we just need to enhance that. And so, as we go forward, we've got to keep thinking about, how do we enhance our brand? How do we, globally, when people think about aviation training and management and all that sort of thing, when they think about unmanned aerial systems, do they think about Salina, Kansas? And that's what we want them to think about. So, that's one of the strategies that we have to work as we, as we get going. There's certainly room here for corporate research and development and training, and that's one of the things the market survey, I hope, will flesh out and will tell us if we're just dreaming or if there really is this, this opportunity. The corporation I mentioned, Northrop Grumman, just, just signed an agreement up in, I think, either Minnesota or Wisconsin, with some university, because, to, to help fly their, some of their large autonomous systems, and it's up there because that's where the customer's located, so I guess we'll give them a buy on that. But there are others that need this kind of airspace where, where we could be that place, and they could become part of our, our community. Emerging companies, we've got to be able to track them, go back up to our capacity, have the capacity in terms of research, faculty, talent, just talent coming out of Polytechnic or, or wherever, Wichita State or KU or wherever, that, that will come here to be part of the, the fabric that encourages these emerging companies to want to come here. We do a pretty good job with commercialization of some of our intellectual property. Kent, do you have any, do you have a one-liner, a bumper sticker about how well we do there?
We're in the top 50 in the country, and in one category, commercialization, we're 16th in America.
So, so, we have some, we have some expertise, and it's got to be one of our strategies is how, how do we take some of the things we, we divine here and, and move them up, up the, up the food chain? Startup opportunities, can we become a place where you have an incubator where folks can come in here and, and start an idea, and we can help them get started and go through whatever maturity point they want to go and, and exit? Is that, is that something we can do? The talent pipeline, we've got to produce the students they want. I mean, the talent in these companies has to be good talent, and we can produce that, but that's part of what we're talking about here, is providing that pipeline. We've got to go out and get competitive grants, and it's, it's much better if we do that as, as partners. And then, of course, we've got to develop the curriculum that would support all this. So, these are, I'll just remind you, these are the, sort of the strategies, if we want to have global leadership in manned and unmanned, in, in global aviation, these are some of the strategies that we're going to have to pursue. We have, we do some of this pretty well right now, others would be new to us, and so, Kent just told you at, at his piece of it, that we, we do okay, but maybe we need, need to be better in, than top, top 50. So, where are we today? This is the timeline we're on, and you'll say, "Well, this is, this is pretty ambitious," and it is. The problem is, everybody, not everybody, a lot of institutions, universities otherwise, think that they, they could be, they could get into the space. They see the wave coming about unmanned and so forth, they want to jump in. And so, there's probably very few universities that don't have, that don't have somewhere in their curriculum something about unmanned. But that's why we've got this timeline going the way, the way it's going down here, and it's pretty aggressive. Kent, can we make the timeline? Are we going to be close or...
Close.
Close, okay. So, we're not going to rush headlong and do something stupid, that's for sure. So, that's why we're going to be close. So, that's, that's appropriate. We're about, what are we, about halfway through the internal piece? We hired a, a third party to kind of validate our work, so we're not drinking our own bath water, it's always a danger. I'm, I'm sounding pretty enthusiastic about this, right? But I could be totally wrong. So, we've got people trying to validate all this, down to, including another firm in DC that will look at, what are the federal research opportunities? What are the grants we can go, go grab? Are they out there? Have they already been all grabbed up by the MITs of the world and the Caltechs, or is there something here for K-State Polytechnic and, and the Salina community? And then, when we get all this done, these first, these top three, then, then we have to come up with our, our plan, and, and then we'll, if it pans out that we have some opportunity, then we have to make a plan, and then we have to decide collectively, is this worth us pursuing? Because it's going to take time and effort and resources to make this happen. I'm of the belief now that there's something here. When we get done with all this, I could be persuaded, we might be persuaded, eh, yeah, there is, but it's really not worth all the time and effort we might put into it, let's look somewhere else. But we've got the, we've got the kernels of something really good here and the resources of something really good, and most importantly, the spirit of cooperation, which is, doesn't always happen, right? Not, not everybody wants to help. So, we've got that going for us, and I think that's probably the biggest thing of all. So, that's kind of where we are in this whole process, and, of course, we want people to come to Polytechnic where the experience does matter, and I think that's it. I'm going to go back to that slide, and I'm going to ask for questions, but before I do, there are a lot of folks here that can, can help with questions. Peter Dorhout is our vice president, K-State for, for research. Kent Blaskok does all our commercialization work. Jackie Hartman is our chief of staff. Everybody knows Dean Fitzsimmons, I hope, Dr. Fitzsimmons back here. Jeff Morris is, is our vice president for communications and marketing. Who am I missing? Oh, Sue Peterson. Sue Peterson is responsible for our government affairs. Fine job she's done in Topeka here last, well, actually, from a K-State perspective, what was that?
Six weeks.
Yeah, well, she's lived there for a long, as long as they've been in session. She's been down there trying to help get things that are important to higher education appropriately dealt with by the legislature, and great job, actually. Thank you, Sue. So, that's, that's our K-State team, a lot of our vice presidents that do the work. So, happy to entertain questions on this, I hope you have some.
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. You just sound like a real visionary, and it's exciting to me because I remember when the base closed and what's happened out there ever since, and everyone was pretty dejected when the base closed, and, and now look at it.
Yeah.
So, this sounds like a great, a great program for us to do.
Well, I, I think...
With all the airspace we have.
Well, it's airspace, it's faculty, it's staff, it's students, it's, the foundation is there, the, the, the infrastructure at the airport, I mean, there's a lot of things that are in place, and plus, we have this one program in particular, the unmanned program. I mean, if you, if you think we're going to be in self-driving cars pretty soon, and I, I wasn't so sure until I bought a new, a new Yukon, and it has all this lane-keeping and distance-keeping stuff on it, and I was showing my wife, I said, "Look at this, you can just take your hands off," and the car went, and the lawns over there, and it comes back. I said, you know, you, well, I did it safely, but I...
Did she say, "Get your hands back on the wheel"?
She immediately said, "What are you doing?" She's, she's better than all those other gadgets, but, but I, you know, you see you're not very far away from, you have to have, you have to be smart, though. Like, the example I use, when it comes to decision, and when you're driving, you always have decisions, and usually, they can involve people getting hurt, you have to be able to go through your logic and, and decide what to do, and so, same with these machines. And so, this whole idea of cognitive autonomy that Wes Bush, who's a smart guy, the CEO of Northrop Grumman, deals with it all the time. His example was, an airplane, they, they developed unmanned airplane that could take off and land and air refuel autonomously and take off and land from a carrier. So, you think about landing a fighter, it's a fighter-sized machine, fighter aircraft-sized machine, so a pretty good-sized machine that lands on a carrier autonomously and no small task. So, they're getting there with that sort of stuff, and, and we want to take advantage of that wave. We, and we, we're, we're pretty close to being right there, but we need, we need more investment, and we think trying to develop a, a commercial side to this will help fund what we want to do. That's our, that's the, that's what we're trying to do. We think there's something there. We'll know when those studies are complete, so...
Okay. Any questions?
Is, is this something you envision inching into little bit by little bit over a couple of years, or do you jump in and make a big splash? As far as, you know, facilities, faculty, students?
There may be a mix, there may... Excuse me, doctor, there may be a mixture of that. You know, I'm a Kansan by birth, so I think we're all pretty cautious, right? About where we put our, our resources. So, I think we'll know a lot when the studies are done and when we say, "Okay, here's the, here's, here's kind of the plan, what the plan would indicate," and then we'll have decisions to make, and they won't be easy. They will require time, effort, and money and resources, and I think at that point we'll know, we'll probably prioritize and may... I'm frustrated, I got to tell you, because I think unmanned, living out of that, and maybe, I don't know what you think, Verna, but it's not the, it's not the best facility. It's, it's okay, but it's not, if you want to bring a new faculty member who says, "Here's our, here's where we do all our unmanned work, business nights," it's not going to impress them a lot. They may still come, because it's, it's, the fundamentals are all there. But it's like our new business school over on the Manhattan campus. I was talking to a, a business recruiter, a young guy that was recruiting students for the business school, and I met him at Redena's Coffee, right down from the business school, and I said, "So, what are you going to do today?" He said, "I've got three students, and I'm going to show them the business school." I said, "Well, how's that going to go? What's, how's it going to be like?" He says, "Well, it used to be in the old school, in one of the older buildings on campus, you'd take the students in, and they'd meet with professors and department heads, and they'd try to determine what the curriculum is, is it, is it what they want and so forth." He said, "With the new business school, we pretty much just walk in the front door and they go, 'Wow, where do I sign?'" And you don't have those other discussions, because that commits them. So, I think we have to provide, you know, the kind of place that if you want to be recognized nationally and globally, would, would show well nationally and globally. So, there may be some things we want to do like that, I don't know, and I, I'm a cautious guy, I don't want to build something that's not going to make sense, not going to be, not going to be utilized or, or whatever. So, I think we have some hard decisions, but I think it could probably be a blend of that, that's what, but I, other universities are moving forward, and so, I, I feel this inside, a sense of urgency, and I think, I know Kent does, I think Peter does, we haven't had a lot of talk about this.
I do now.
That's not how it works, but they'll be a lot nicer than they normally would be. So, I don't know, Verna, what, you, you...
Sense of urgency.
Yeah, I think there's, yeah, because you're, you're right in the middle of this here, you know who you compete with for talent, and so, I'd say probably a blend. I think, I think sooner rather than later on some items, so, yes, sir.
Do you have any idea of a timeline?
Well, that timeline that was up there, and if I can go back to it...
I think it said planning in June 2017. We're there.
Well, we're in June. I think, I, I think we may not hit the August. Can we be honest with ourselves here? We're not going to hit August.
There's always one, there's always one.
I hope I make it to August. I think, I think we're about halfway through those first, first three studies, so, we gave ourselves, you know, three or, or four months to finish those, so I imagine we'll finish those by early fall, and, and then heading into kind of mid-fall time, we'll be putting together a plan, and so, not August, but probably October would be my, my guess is kind of where we are. We're, we're interviewing a lot of people. We have, I think, we did 50 companies for the first part of that up there, and that takes a while to schedule those, get in, do your, do a proper interview and, and get out, so, so, that's probably a more realistic timeline.
Sounds, sounds right.
Yeah, it sounds right. Well, we don't want to rush this part of it, because this is the, this is the building block that says, "Yeah, you're on the right track," or "You're not on the right track," and I, I'd like to spend time getting that down, so...
I just want to say it's, it's commendable. We've always known that we have a jewel here in, in K-State Polytechnic. I still call it K-State Salina occasionally, but it's just, it's, it's wonderful to see leadership from the very top supporting this program and this institution and making all of us feel like we're a valuable part of, of the K-State community, and so, thank you... And so thank you very much for, for being here today and for opening, for being so supportive of investigating these amazing possibilities for us.
Well, thank you for saying that because hopefully that's how, that's how it is. And when I, when I got to Salina, I've not spent a lot of time previously in, in Salina, but since I've been, I come over here probably about once a month. It's important, keeping Polytechnic connected to main campus for lots of reasons. And sometimes they can feel like they're out here on their own, right, Verna? And so we've been working that piece of it. And, and then you find these nuggets that are just, you know, world-class and you, you just can't let them die. You have to, you know, and it's good for all of us. And you all already have shown, shown to be great partners because you've, a lot of people in this room have invested in this, this first part of this study. And it's not, not a lot of money, but it's money and it's, it's the part. So we appreciate that. So, so that's how we'll, that's how we'll move forward as partners. And so I think we have to be proud, at K-State, we have to be proud of Polytechnic, but we also have to be proud of the community that the university is in. And that's you all. And by the way, I'm impressed with the community. So I started driving around Salina and it's, it's been a long time since I've been here. And I wish my parents were alive because my dad did business in this, in this city, from Kansas City. And I used to travel with him out here and I can remember in a much different state of development. And I think they'd be, they'd be really impressed. As I drive around, I, I think of them and say, well, you wouldn't believe what we've, what's happening out here now. So this is a great community and, and we want to, we want to, we want Polytechnic to grow along with the community. We think we can do both and, and responsible kind of growth, high-tech kind of growth. So we're, we're a sustainable sort of endeavor. That's, that's what we're about.
Well, I, I'd like to thank you all for being here from Manhattan. I just want to recognize Representative Clayes for the work that you've done to kind of help in this effort. And for Kansas State Polytechnic, the, all the support you've given them in the, in the legislature. Appreciate that. For the, for the folks at, where we're, we've got this going on televised and it'll be recorded and so on. Just for the folks at home, I think one of the things that really is exciting for us about this initiative is the commercialization aspect of this thing. And, you know, as I start to see the business and financial plan, th- those are the steps that start to get pretty exciting. And can you just maybe give us a sort of a, you know, the inputs going into this are, are very well thought out. What are, what are the outcomes? And what are the, what would, what would success look like from sort of the business community and, and Salina as a whole, other than the obvious benefits of the Kansas State Polytechnic?
Yeah. So if I could call on Kent, because this is, this is what Kent lives and breathes for us, would you mind, come up here if they're going to record it? I didn't mean to wander out of the realm of. But could you help answer that? I'll, I'll fill in where you.
Yeah, that's good. I think that's an excellent question. Essentially, what, what you're sort of querying is what's in it for Salina? And, and what would be our engagement in the partnership that would allow Salina to, to benefit in a significant way? And, and I would say in this initiative, the global private sector is essential and critical. And, and the, the end question will be, can we create a global opportunity that is worth investing in from the perspective of the global private sector? And if, and if, and if we identify a niche that is worth that, then what will happen is money from around the country and around the world will come into Salina. We will be able to attract companies into Salina to be leveraged against the capability of Salina and Kansas State University Polytechnic. That bringing in of money and companies will, will yield jobs, wealth creation and a broader stability to the Salina economy because you're bringing money in from further out, beyond Salina, beyond Kansas, beyond the United States. And that's exactly the kind of economic stability every community wants. And if we identify the right niche and if K-State does its part and if the community does its part, then they will be benefit in economic prosperity building and benefit in advancing Kansas State, State University's land grant mission. Is that fair?
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to find out through these studies if there are global entities, companies that have a need for what we have here. And that's what we're trying to figure out. I mean, and it's, and we are a global place, right? So it is not beyond imagination that some company in Japan will say, you know, we can't do this in Japan, but if we, if we constructed a hangar out here and had some devices and, and did some sensor work around here or whatever, whatever they want to do, or just learn how to operate and integrate in, in complicated airspace, this is the place. We know how to, how to help them do that. And, and it could, you know, over time, I think it could involve, we're talking K-State today and I'm the President of K-State, I got that. But this is, you know, you can see Wichita State involved, you can see KU involved because they all have pieces of, of what we're talking about here. So not trying to make this exclusive, although we do have a campus here, we want that to prosper and grow, but we could have lots of partners. And we, we've started initial discussions with the other universities and we'll continue that, matter of fact.
Is there any member of the public that would like to ask a question or concerns? Could you come up to the microphone, please? So they can hear it on TV?
You're on TV.
You're on TV, right.
I got a face for radio.
Your name and, and.
Dan Baff, 2424 Drake Place, Salina. What kind of participation would you like from the city of Salina? Where the community?
So that's a great question. I think a lot of, a lot of that will be informed on, as we get to our, our strategy and our business plan, what resources are we going to have to put up? And it could be, you know, it could be somebody's time, it could be whatever, it could be real estate, it could be money. And so I don't think we know that yet. That would be a separate, a separate discussion, separate approvals and all that sort of thing. So, but it could be all of that, frankly. Support is important, for sure. You know, I don't, I haven't talked too much to Verna about this, but let's just say that the 15 Saudi students that go through flight training this year are ecstatic. And Saudi Arabia says, we're going to send you 50. You said you weren't ready last year, you got to be ready this year. How do we accommodate 50 stu-, where do we, where do they?
Got it covered.
You got it covered. Well.
Verna will take care of it.
So, but, you know, so there's, I think there's some things that the community would probably take advantage of there to, to enable that growth to happen. And according to Verna, I don't know what Verna means by having it covered yet unless they're all sleeping in one of, in one of your big hangars. But, no, so, but, so I, I can't, I can't answer it specifically. I just, it could be, there's going to have to be probably some investment to attract how much of that, how much we can, we can get our, hopefully, our, talking as partners here, our corporate partners to put in upfront. Is there anything required there? Is there, are there any kind of tax breaks? I mean, I don't, I'm, now I'm talking about things I don't know about, but are there any of those sorts of things that would have to happen to attract people here to get this, this engine rolling? So that's, so that's the best, I'm sorry, that's the best I can do. But it could be, and we're, we're way before that period now. We're still trying to make sure we got to, we think we can make this happen. That's a great question. And if I were a citizen of Salina, I'd want to know exactly that. What am I, if I'm going to support anything like this, what am I signing up for? So we're, we're trying to leverage other people's resources, frankly, if we can do that. But we'll see. That's part of the study.
Anyone else from the community have anything? See, we have County Commissioner here. See some other board members up there. Pastor, you never run out of anything. Do you have anything you want, want? No, okay.
Do you frequently get corporations for whom you might, who might be clients to buy into the early stage, financially?
Yeah, I think, I personally, I did some, before I went to K-State here permanently, I did some private sector board work. And I, I think we can. Like I said, Northrop Grumman went with some, some arrangement with some university up in some relatively small town up, and I, forgive me, you could probably Google it, but it's either like Wisconsin or Minnesota, somewhere up there, maybe the Dakotas where they're, they just said, or maybe it's Dakotas, North Dakota. And, and one of their clients is up there, so I think the Air Force is up there. So they, they co-located up there and, and they'll do that investment. They'll make the investment to be up there. I don't know what arrangements they made with the local authorities and governments in terms of taxes or any of that piece of it. But, but yes, I think we can. And I think, and I think we should. I think that's our goal. Because we have something really valuable here, as I, and it's this partnership again. So I think we'll, we can figure out a way to, to do this. I, I wish I could be more specific. Got, got to get these studies done, got to see where the interest is. And we've got the right people, you know, we are, as, as you all know, you put money into our, the second box there where we're doing the external look to see, to validate what we're hearing otherwise, to make sure we're doing this right. But I, again, so, and maybe you think we're here a little bit too early. I, I have this, this, this sense of urgency that there are other universities that would like to take some of the nuggets that we have and develop them themselves. And maybe, maybe they're better endowed than we are. I showed you our chart. We've got state funding going down. We've relied on tuition revenue more than we ever have in the past. For good ideas, we can always, we'll, we'll find a way, I think. But we need to leverage the commercial sector here.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your coming and the community appreciates you.
Well, we appreciate the community.
Polytechnic.
We appreciate, Mayor, we appreciate the community very much. Thank you for allowing me to take my jacket off.
I think it's cooled off a little bit.
Yeah, when I started, started dancing up here, it was, got a little warmer than I expected, so. But we, we thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And in a special way, we know this is not a small thing, so.
Appreciate it. Is there anything else that question has? Okay. Okay. There is anything else, well, we'll, we'll thank you very much and we'll join you later. Hey, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? Second.
Do you have a motion to adjourn in a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, we're adjourned.